Meeting is called to order. This is a joint general government subcommittee town council meeting Wednesday, March 12th, 2025 at seven, at seven twenty-three in the Veterans Meeting Room. Uh, please note that it is possible a quorum of the town council may be present and discuss the agenda items, but vote, voting rights shall be limited to subcommittee members in attendance. Okay. Agenda item number two, roll call. Councillor, uh, Councillor Chaney here?
Here.
Councillor Dow is absent. Citizen member Clements and citizen member Julian is absent. Um, we have a quorum. Agenda item number three. Review and discuss human resources department transfer request in the amount of one thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-one cents from the following to, to conference and meetings account. From account number zero, zero, one, one, five, two, dash, five, seven, three, zero, 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 account name dues and subscriptions amount eleven dollars from account number zero, zero, one, one, five, two, five, seven, one, zero, 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 account name mileage amount four hundred dollars and from account number zero, zero, one, one, five, two, five, seven, eight, zero, 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 account name miscellaneous amount one thousand forty-five dollars and twenty-one cents to account number zero, zero, one, one, five, two, dash, five, seven, one, one, zero, zero, account name conference and meetings amount totaling one thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-one cents. Entertain a motion to town council for approval.
No move. Second.
Discussion, town manager?
This is for the human resources director. We had her attended numerous, um, conferences this year to expand her training experience in this account, uh, when, uh, there's another MMA, uh, MMHR conference coming up as well. So this would be cover the cost of the recent conference where the hotel rates went over, uh, were more than, uh, cause they were short booking on some of these hotels and then the future conference. So recommend that transfer.
Any discussion, any further discussion? None, all those in favor? Unanimous. Agenda item number four. Review and discuss a human resources department transfer request of two hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-four cents from account number zero, zero, one, one, five, two, dash, five, four, two, zero, 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 office supplies to account number zero, zero, one, one, five, two, dash, five, three, four, two, zero, zero, print. Entertain a motion to the town council for approval.
No move. Second.
Discussion, town manager?
And I'll, uh, clarify that it should be print forms. So that's just, we have a lot of printing that we have to send out to all, uh, health insurance, to school and town side retirees. Um, it's just, uh, we need a little bit more money to get through the rest of the year.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Agenda item number five. Review and discuss the town manager transfer request of one thousand dollars from account number zero, zero, one, one, three, two, dash, five, seven, eight, one, zero, zero, town council reserve to account number zero, zero, one, 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 dash, five, three, zero, 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 town council specialized services for the purpose of bylaw code updates. Entertain a motion to recommend to the town council for approval.
No move. Second.
So this is for every time that we have a change in our charter or bylaw that we adopt, that's be printed onto the website for the code publishing. So when you go to the website and they charge us per page for that, um, and, uh, right now, uh, we have a, um, a shortage of seventy-five dollars. However, we do know that we're gonna have a couple bylaw updates that we're going through right now, possibly the ADU bylaw change. Uh, we also have, uh, water restrictions that we may have to put in, uh, plus any future, um, changes. So it would cover the shortage that we have. It's like twenty-two dollars per page. It's ridiculous how much they charge. The largest charge was because of the charter change, so they had to update the whole charter and up, uh, upload it.
Mr. Chaney?
Uh, I think I can't do that changes.
No, it's, it's, it's the e-code, so it's the whatever the, it's a code publishing for, for the actual laws that change and bylaws that change.
Yep.
So they updated. So this is to hopefully get us through the rest of the year with any additional changes that we have.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Agenda, excuse me. Agenda item number six. Review and discuss amending the code of bylaws to add section twelve, dash, one, zero, zero, demolition delay bylaw as requested by the Southbridge Historical Commission and recommend action to town council for the holding of three readings and adoption. This is just a discussion?
Did we get a copy?
Yes.
Did you pack it? I didn't, that's what I was looking for.
Um, well, I emailed it to who I was supposed to.
I don't know, I'm not saying didn't, I'm just saying.
I didn't get it either.
I, I did get it.
You did.
It could be hidden somewhere else.
I can go make a copy if you want.
It's okay.
Okay. So it needs to be a motion. Or is it just review and discuss?
It says review and discuss. Was there a motion?
Yeah, recommend action to town council.
Okay, well, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by Chaney here. Second.
Oh, sorry, second. I'm sorry, I'm reading it. Well, let me read it, I'll let you know.
I'm, I'm gonna step aside, I'll let the historic commission come off because this is a recommendation from them, uh, for them to come before the general government subcommittee for review, um, to take action. So I'll let them come forward.
So the email was on March seventh to, um, I believe it to MF, uh, MF Milton?
No, no, yeah, I, I notice sometimes the, um, the stuff doesn't come through, like, I don't know where it goes, but I got the meeting notice, but I don't see it.
I believe it was, uh, two thousand and twenty-two.
I think so.
Uh, it was, we began this process in twenty nineteen.
So we came in front of subcommittee and Denise Clements was on and we talked about it and we discussed and changed a few things. We went and worked with inspections, tried working with inspections and it's basically we've hit a wall a few times, many times, only getting a response from Ted Tatro once in two thousand and twenty-two with a few questions and nothing since then. So we have tried working with them. Webster adopted Webster's town demolition delay bylaw is a carbon copy of ours. We did have, we did ask the, it, we asked Jack, sorry, town manager to send it to the lawyer. So we have, I don't know if anybody has a copy of that, but this is what the lawyer changed and played with their red letters.
We also worked with the Massachusetts Historical Commission to get their input.
If I may, uh, so is the, is the, is the document that Jack just gave me, the town manager gave me with the, what the lawyer suggested? Like, is, what is it?
We also didn't get answers back from the lawyer. So whatever we tried, we just, we, we did change what we needed to change again. It says we didn't understand some of the jargon the lawyer put in the columns and changed. If you look on some of the pages, we've asked many questions.
Okay, I see, yeah. So, but so do we, but again, to my question, the, whatever the town manager just gave, does it reflect what you changed here into here?
Some of it has, but not all of it.
Not all of it. So what we need is like to be able to actually, at least I know I like to read through stuff, to be able to have something that, what did the lawyer say or what did, yeah, okay. All right, just, just suggesting. I mean, I know Webster, you say this is Webster's technically, or what Webster did?
No, Webster carbon copied it, carbon copied. This is Webster's town bylaw and word for word, it is our town bylaw.
Oh, so they took yours?
Yes.
Oh, from two thousand and nineteen?
Yeah, from whenever they took it and they adopted it. We've been working on it since when?
Twenty nineteen.
Okay, all right, just curious. And I knew you had some.
Yes, we, we've adjusted it in terms of your recommendations by changing the years and all the, uh, the things that you had asked us to do.
Right.
And we did work, tried working with inspections all these years.
Okay. Um, all right, questions at the second. Uh, there's a lot to write.
I have one. You, you asked us to change the years, um, business days, month, uh, how many months it was to be in holding, all that, and we changed everything that you had asked us to.
Added definitions to some words.
Right. Just coming back a little bit. Long ago. If I may, I wanted to say, didn't we see this? Like, it was, it was weird. I just had this, I'm like, didn't, didn't we talk about this at some point?
Yes.
It was two thousand and nineteen, yeah, that's. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So. Boy, I think it would be, I don't know. Other questions before I leave?
Councillor Chaney?
I'm kind of opposed to the bylaw altogether. Don't like the fact of government getting involved in some of this decision to knock down a building and potentially delaying the process for eighteen months. And during that eighteen months, the building ends up being more of a disrepair than what it is. So that's part of my issues, is the fact that for any building to be demolished, I'm reading it right, I did have it in my email. I'm reading it right.
Which section are you reading?
Demolition by neglect, demolition itself. Demolition, any act of putting down, destroying, removing, erasing a building or commencing the work of total substantial exterior just with the intent of complying with the same. I'll have to find, begin with the eighteen months. Part eleven, preserve, preferably, you're asking to preferably preserve it. Any significant building which the commission determines is in the public interest to preserve and rehabilitate rather than devolve, demolish. A prefer, a preferably preserved building is subject to an eighteen-month demolition delay period by this law. So I have a hard time with that because usually when the building's gonna be demolished, it's in pretty tough shape to begin with. And by potentially having the ability to delay it for eighteen more months, I believe puts the homeowner in potentially some legal, uh, problems or potentially the town. So, and again, it's just more government, uh, interference with, with somebody that, uh, wants to knock their building down and do something else. I mean, I'll just use an example as, and I want people to fully understand that it's not happening. Somebody came here and said they wanna knock down the old, uh, bank at the corner of Everett Street and they went before the commission and the commission felt, geez, that's an historic building and we don't want it knocked down, but they have plans to put a modernized building up there that would have tenants and all that. Potentially you could delay that for eighteen months. And I just, I just see the possibility of developers or builders just walking away from the project because of the delay that we, uh, put forward as a bylaw. That's all.
Councillor Lazo?
I'm a firm believer in maintaining the historical buildings. It's very expensive. I know that town manager and myself were in a meeting and discussion was the town hall and the assessment and the first question from this gentleman was, how about we tear down the town hall and put a new modern day building? And I looked at the guy and go, not in this town, you're not gonna have, no one's gonna take down the town hall. And I don't think so. I said, let's, so let's move on with the restoration of this town hall, the reconfiguration, uh, as the town manager mentioned, you know, to reorganize things where they run more fluid as far as departmental. The open concept, we have finance offices that are not where they're in the same place, you know? So I mean, I think we're gonna be looking at the whole ball of wax and the drone went up and looked at the tower and repairs and, you know, we got a, we're getting a full-blown study on the, you know, the oil tank in the back, the handicap access. So I understand that, but we're the government. We get a grant to get that study done and we'll probably get a grant to fix the, the town hall. My question to you is, let's take Sacred Heart Church, are you familiar with that as the?
The veneer is falling off, it is structurally sound, I've seen on the report.
Right. How would you deal with that, with this bylaw, if the gentleman turns around and says, I don't have the money to fix it? I don't have the ability to fix it. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna sell all the granite off the outside, the copper, the timbers and the, the icons and stuff, statues and just take it down. How would this bylaw work in your eyes? Would you want it to work? What is the intent of the assault?
The, the intent is, uh, it, we were asked to kind of, I came in, in the early stages of this. Amanda's been on board since, since the very beginning of the bylaw. Arthur Martin was also part of it. The intent was when the Beechwood came down and it was to put in O'Reilly's auto parts and that was the reason why it torn down and it's to try to stop that, is trying to take the historical aspect when a, a building can possibly be saved or sold and be restored that is historically significant to Southbridge. I'm not saying, no, you can't, but it's just, it's, we, it's, it's still gonna be just a piece of paper. It's still gonna be a bylaw, just like a historical register paper is. It's just trying to put something in place that would help preserve some of the buildings that possibly could be fixed.
For, for example, the, uh, fire station and the Tiffany building across the street on Allen Street. Tiffany building is up for sale. That's a historical building.
Which one's Tiffany building?
The old Sopperjune news.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. But my, my, my whole point is, who's gonna pay when you stop this building from being taken down and the private sector comes in that we wanna do this? I'm, 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 I'm kind of baffled. They wanted to tear down the credit union and put in, I don't know, a Dairy Queen and...
Well, they did, but that's not the point.
Right, and it didn't come through. Another gentleman jumps in and wants to make it a different concept. But the thing is, if you don't have a person coming in to take care of the concept and, and, and I wanna understand the bylaw because I know we have good boards and commissions that can influence investors through the planning board save, the historical society, where we can try and mold the clay to the final outcome of whatever happens to a building. Cause there are a lot of people coming to town investing in buildings and once they put their coin on the table, they're in charge. And as George Chaney said, I, I would like to work hand in hand with each developer to make their trip pleasant, but also to, you know, to keep our historical value to some of the buildings that we have, much like the fire station. We know we're building a new one, what's gonna happen to it? You know, uh, what is it gonna be when it grows up, I think, but I, I'm a little, I'm fifty-fifty on this. I don't know if we need government that far in to the investors to stop somebody that wants to pour, say, thirteen million into a building and then the historical society says, no, you're not. And I know you say it's just a paper, but what I've learned about papers in Southbridge, when it goes to the enforcement side, the permit doesn't get it issued. Then all of a sudden, you're gonna lose the person that want, wanted to do something with a property in Southbridge. And right now, we're on the biggest swing of progress in a long time. I'm not sure this would be what we need at this point, but I understand and I respect what you're trying to do. I'm on board with a lot of what you're saying. I just don't know if I'm ready for more government to tell the private sector what to do. I'm, I'm open, I'm still open to it.
Councillor Chaney?
I find it difficult for the community, the town, houses, elected officials, telling people what to do with their property. Uh, it's not up to me to tell somebody they can't do this because the building is old. There's rumor in town they're gonna take a building down to make drive-through for a bank. Who am I to stop that? Because it's, building is over fifty years old.
It's actually not a rumor.
I'm just saying. Who am I to stop something like that?
Well, they came, they, they talked to us about that because it's the Lenti building and it's so his, it's so changed so much, it's not even, doesn't even look. If you look at a picture of what it used to look like and you look at it now, it is so structurally changed that there is no more historically significance to it other than the Coca-Cola sign on the building and the Lenti, the graphics. That's the only thing. That's part of, that's what's part, in part of this bylaw, is it structurally completely changed? Is it, but not, it's, it's hard to explain this. It's just...
Mr. Buxton?
Yes, member of the historic commission. Um, one of the important factors for this demolition bylaw delay is to give the historic commission, town officials and also the abutters and, in the area, time to, um, give their input. Uh, like you said, pick Sacred Heart. Um, if Sacred Heart was gonna be dropped to the ground and a new business was being put in there, it would have to go through various. All we're doing is we want, uh, the Beechwood was a, a shock to everybody in town that they would just come in, beautiful Victorian house and just pop it with no consideration. We're not trying to tell private sector developers what to do. Uh, a lot of times, the only time historic preservation has anything to do with it is if they get a historic grant. They get a historic grant. There are a lot of teeth in the state's, um, grant system to ensure that it stays historic. Um, I'm a firm believer, I would love to see all our historic properties saved. However, a historic property will not be saved unless it has a practical use in today's society. We are not old Sturridge Village. We are not putting pristine historic structures in an out air, opening air museum. We are trying to prove, deserve the, the culture and the history. Uh, we just went through a meeting where history was, felt that it was lacking in a, a piece of artwork. We're trying to put at least any, uh, input from the community from before a property is brought down. That's all. Uh, and like you said, this, um, this is just a piece of paper to give us that delay. Um, if the project goes through, it goes through.
There is mention of hearings, sorry, there is mention of hearings that the building inspectors of the historical commission would meet and would be open to the public and the, uh, property owners would be at the meeting as well.
Any further comments?
I mean, I just, we did work with Southbridge, uh, Southbridge Credit Union when the, the, the horse, the carriage barn, they came to us and asked us color. What, what could we do to, what, what, what could they do to add to the front facade of the new building even though they were taking the other one down? It, it's just an input. It's a, we're an advisory board, we can't enforce anything. I said, but there are some things in our bylaws that say they need to come to the historical commission before something is done.
Well, I, I, I've got some, I'm sorry, Ms. Clements, did you have anything to say?
Well, yeah, I was gonna say that, and again, in talking with the town, there are things that, to come and get input on, but then again, there is, depending on where the building's located and what section of the town and, and that, that determines what amount of authority you kind of have to, to push the certain things that you want. So we already have, you know, the downtown core, central, whatever you call, you know, there's a, there are certain areas and whether a building's already on the National Register of Historic Places, if it's not on the register, then there's limitations again in what the commission can, they can make suggestions all they want, you know, it doesn't have to comply if it's not on the register. And they can, of course, force the issue and try to put it on the register, but I mean, that's, that probably is, is very difficult to, uh, make happen.
Yeah, we had a house on Maple Street, all those little houses down there, they came and asked us about, um, solar on the house. We looked at what they did, the house has already been changed before they even bought it. It's already, it's not the cardboard siding and it's net. We advise go for it.
Yeah, right, right, but that's you. So I think, I think some of the concern is, you know, your intention and then somebody next year or five years down the road's intention could be very different. You put a law in place, you put a bylaw in place which it has enforcement and all, and then other people are more determined than some to, or not at all. Webster may have this, how many times have they enacted it? Because is it just sitting there as a, a sleeping dormant bylaw or are they actually using it? The eighteen months is a long time, in my opinion, still. Um, eighteen months is like, that, that's just too long for anybody. And even just recently, I happened to walk into a media, into an office and there was a meeting going on with a potential, uh, investor locally and I heard, one of the main questions was, and I was hearing the response from planning was, uh, you know, what about the facade, you know, do I fall into the jurisdictions of like the facade where, or do I have to go to anybody? Do I have to get permission to change anything? And, and that was a concern for this person who was about to invest a lot of money in a building in the community. And so, and like my ears perked up, you know, because of things that we're doing personally. And I was like, it's just curious, listening to, listening to things. And that's, that's a deterrent from investors, you know, technically, with the more, the more rules. I like the, you know, the thing where you've got the hearings and they come in and, and then you make a determination, maybe you determine, eh, it's not feasible to say because, so you're a reasonable person, the people with you are reasonable people and there may be beautiful buildings. It could be, for instance, the, the, uh, the house, which I was shocked too to see that gone because I didn't think it was in that bad a shape. But it could be where you suddenly go in and from the outside, it's one way and you go, oh, this is destroyed. I know a few of those here in town already that are very disappointed that we're allowed to be squatted in and ruined, uh, you know?
This couple on Hamilton Street.
This is around on Main Street. So, um, but anyway, just saying, you, how can you force somebody who's gonna buy that then not to, to destroy it?
So the eighteen month has been in that since the original writing?
Yeah.
I don't recall, and I looked over my notes, my old ones.
I believe Sturridge has eighteen months in it.
I don't recall any notes from when I went over it that anybody had a concern about the eighteen months being too long when we first came.
Yeah, I would have to, I don't even know what I have for notes from back then. Just saying, those are, thinking about that now, I guess in retrospect for moving forward with things, it's like eighteen months is a long time.
Well, this is where, if inspections was able to sit with us and I was even flexible to even take the day off from work to work with, with inspections because they work during the day, is we, you had asked us to work in inspections, so we didn't, so it, it counteracted, didn't counteract any inspections or didn't, it didn't interfere with inspections and all of that and it's just, has not...
So my advice to you in the future with stuff like that would be to contact their supervisor, their boss, whoever that is. And with, in any situation, and I like inspection, I like everybody here, I'm saying whether you're in this town or another town, I would have contacted whoever's in charge of them who could have that facilitated a meeting, I'm sure. Just saying.
We did, October, I have an email, I have documentation.
Well, that's going off on another tangent.
No, just saying, we have tried several times.
Can we just put something in the town bylaw also, like the town council could override the eighteen months? It's a simple goal. So it gives you your eighteen months to play games if you want to, but if the town council feels that should be done, that they can board and override?
You can put anything in a bylaw.
Yeah, I'm not so sure that...
Mr. Buxton, do you have another comment?
Yes, as far as inspections go, I attended the meeting when, um, Mr. Tatro is there. Um, and, and Mr. Tatro somewhat echoed what, um, Mr. Lazo and Mr. Chaney were talking about. Well, you know, uh, maybe the historic commission shouldn't be telling private property owners what to do with their property. I, I listened to his input, um, and then the following day I was thinking about it. Well, inspections department tells people what to do with their private property. Uh, I, if I own private property and I put in a, a shed with a composting toilet, I have an ADU, right? No, there are a lot more rules and regulations containing. Um, this is just a stopgap, giving the community and the town government input, that's all.
Councillor Lazo?
On a quick note to Mr. Buxton. The inspections department carries out the mask code, plumbing code, electrical code, everything. They tell people to do what they have to do with their buildings for safety reasons. This council, and I will go out on a branch and say, this council has been frustrated with the bylaws in everything that we do. with the bylaws in everything that we do to start business and make it a fluid motion to do something in Southbridge. I ran six years ago, and I said, we need to lift the government off the people. I know we live in Massachusetts, I get it, I'm in jail here, but we need to look at our town and say, what do we wanna do when we, you know, twenty years from now, where do you wanna be? Do we wanna start development, move development? I know that I'm a guy that, I'm a Democrat, but I like less government and more workability with people at our boards and commissions. But our planning board can have a public hearing, a special granting, a special permit, they put all kinds of stuff on a special permit, and a lot of good stuff, you know? I mean, the marijuana stretch, that certain kind of trees, certain colors, certain windows, and they put that all in the special permit. But the thing is, when a guy comes into town, he's putting all the money up, and you turn around and say, okay, you gotta go to the planning board, then you gotta go to conservation, then you gotta go to historical, then you gotta go over here, hey, I'll see you later, I'm going to Sturbridge. They're, they're more friendly business-wise. So, when you look at it, yes, we have got rules and regulations for our town. I'm not arguing that. To what extent do you wanna do it? And for me, it, it's a tug of war, a healthy debate, because you have an actual value with the historical buildings, like tearing down the fire apartment, I'd give it away to somebody who was a, a big investor, if they could bring it back a hundred percent and make it a brewery or a restaurant or something. But I think, there's a fine line, here's why I'm having a tug of war with this bylaw. I'm in the business of making less bylaws, and here's one coming at us to tell Dr. Thomas not to rip his building down. You don't own the building, he owns the building, he's got all the beans in the pot and nobody else has any financial interest, why would you wanna hold up an investor? So, I'm having a hard time with that, I don't think I'd be in favor of it. Thank you.
Any other comments? I, I, I have some questions. Where did we come up with, if, if you look at section twelve under, under definitions, it says significant building, any building within the town which has been determined by the commission to be significant based on any of the following criteria, and I know these are, these are written in the disjunctive, so any one of these criteria would be sufficient. A, the building is fifty years old, fifty years or older. My house was built in nineteen seventy-four, that means if I wanted to rip it down and build a new house, I'd have to come to the historical commission, apparently, um, to make sure it's not a significant building. I, I mean, fifty years is not a long time, it's not historical, fifty years, nothing, nothing has been built in the last fifty years, it's historical.
Um, so in nineteen sixty, sorry.
So, uh, you know, that's, it's just, it's a little, to me, I just, we're, I wonder where we came up with that figure, fifty years.
We dropped it from seventy-five to fifty on the recommendation of the original coming in front of subcommittee.
Oh, I don't know about that.
It's in my notes.
Okay, and, so, you know, I.
I, I can give you an example of a building that is, um, fifty. Um, in nineteen sixty-four, legendary late New England architect, uh, Donald Janisic, or Janiski, um, he built the property at, um, one oh six Colaf. It is built with solid glass and concrete, and it actually has a sunken-in living room, so it's of the style of that time. Um, he is.
Sixty years. I want to see tomorrow when I have my father built it.
That's sixty.
I will own that job.
All right, so, all right, all right, I'll accept that one building, okay?
Also, um, Westwood Parkway, um, most of those homes, most of those houses are Sears Kit's homes, um, which is significant to this town, because you don't really find neighborhoods in this area that have a lot of Sears Kit homes.
I, I, you know, it's just, it's, it's, we're putting a lot of restrictions on people here, I mean, i- i- the other thing is, you know, uh, there aren't really, I, I mean, how many buildings in, in town are less than fifty years old? I mean, I mean, have we had a significant real estate development?
Harvard Farms.
Well, yeah, I know exactly what that is, that, that's very recent, but I mean, all the houses around there, all the houses around that area are all over fifty years old, well over fifty years old, I wouldn't consider any of them historical. Um, you know, I mean, i- it's, I think fifty years is not a long time.
That was also a recommendation by Steve Brady, um, he said that fifty years is usually the threshold. Um, and with the Historical Society, he has mentioned that a number of times. That was part of our recommendation.
It's also in Sturbridge's bylaw, it's, and that Sturbridge demolition W A bylaw is a lot stricter than this one. It's in Concord, it's in Lexington, it's in a lot of the other towns that we, well, all the towns that we poll ground.
Out towards, out towards the Cape, yes.
So, I mean, if I, I mean, I just, it seems, it doesn't seem like a long time to me, maybe that's 'cause I'm a dyna, I'm a relic myself, okay? But it, but it doesn't seem that long, the time that it should be considered historical, um, just based on that one criteria. I mean, just based on that one criteria, because the way this reads is that, that's all you have to find, okay? Is that it's fifty years old, that could be a significant building. Um, so it's, because this is all written in the, in the disjunctive. So you don't have to have a group of these, you just have to have one, according to the way this is written.
We didn't know how to number it, this is just, we worked with, um, Gus, it was just, it's a mock-up, we didn't know how to write it, we've never written a bylaw, so we didn't really have.
Item, I mean, in the same paragraph there, E says, buildings historic, historically or architecturally important to, you know, either by itself or in the context of a group of buildings, who, who makes that determination? I mean, are we gonna hire experts?
The Mass Historical Commission does have a readout.
I mean, are we gonna have a group of experts that are gonna decide that? I just don't understand who's gonna make that decision. Yeah, then I got a couple of other questions here, uh, I think the eighteen months is too long. I also, um, I, I'd also be concerned with, um, you know, the enforcement issues here, uh, it seems to me that if the town wants to impose, if we go with this kind of a, a stat, a rule, the town wants to impose its will in this manner, then, um, I don't think fining people for not being able to comply with the town's mandates, um, is appropriate. Uh, I would say that if the town wants a remedy to it, that we should take the property by eminent domain. Right, I mean, that's, it, the town, it should be the town's cost if we're gonna impose this, this kind of a, this kind of a burden on people.
That particular part, we worked with Mike Julian in a Zoom meeting, and that was recorded, he had suggested some of those things, and it's kinda dummy it down. We're willing to, to sit with someone and inspections and just get a smaller version of this down, so we have a protection in place, it's.
I'm not, I'm not, um, I'm, I'm not opposed to having some rules and regulations around some historical buildings, you know, um, but, I mean, this applies to the entire town, I mean, every, 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 every triple-decker in town would fall within this, within this, uh, within this, within this bylaw. Um, and, you know, I think, I think those kind of historical rules need to be targeted. The buildings need to be identified upfront, and, um, and the owners need to be able, be put on notice that their buildings are subject to these historical regulations, so that they, when they go to sell it, or when they go to make modifications, they can plan for these kind of, these, these kind of, uh, things. This right now just seems very broad, it, it pretty much throws in the entire town, um, of Southbridge, as I read it.
There's three or four binders, I'm sorry, it, it, that's okay, there's three or four binders in the, in the library of all the historical places that are registered.
Those are registered, but this would go beyond registered places, I mean, and, and I'm not, you know, I, I, like I said, uh, you know, registered places are, you know, those are important things that, that we wanna preserve for our, for our culture, et cetera, that's good. But the way this is written, it seems to be well, it'd be, you know, very broad in what, what is, what fault, what could fall within it. Uh, I think, can I just, I think, uh, Council Reedus had been wanting to say something, you know?
I was just curious, I did pull up the Sturbridge, um, bylaw, and I think it would be beneficial if we sort of had maybe, um, the, a comparison, especially if we're thinking about, if theirs is more, um, it, it's stricter than this bylaw and what other towns around us have, then I think it doesn't hurt us to have something in place to preserve the character of our community, because we, we just talked about the history, right? Of Southbridge, and if we give developers sort of a carte blanche to do whatever they want, I, I mean, yes, people buy buildings and, you know, it is their property, but to have a little bit of a guideline in some way to try to preserve the character of the town that we love so much, and especially in relation to other towns around us, if their requirements are stricter, then I, I would have less fear that they're gonna go to another town that's stricter than what we're gonna propose. So I think it would be beneficial if there were, you know, some comparisons in the packet for Monday, so that we can take a look at what the differences are.
Ms. Clemens?
So, a couple of things, one, um, that, we have to remember, this is a demolition bylaw that we're talking about. So while there are lots of buildings in our community over fifty years, this affects the intent to demolish. So that's, there aren't too many demolitions that are really going on unless a building has been burned down or whatever, you know, there's, we really don't demolish just because. I'm just, that's to your point of needing or wanting something. My thought would be two things, one, um, well, there's a couple of things in there, but, so if we're getting inspections involved, and we know that inspections in the building office, you know, is, is in control of things like how blighted, how blighted is a building, that type of thing. Um, and you're, we need determinations of whether or not this can actually even be triggered. If you were to do something, and I'm not sure a hundred percent favorable still, I wasn't a hundred percent back then, um, inspections, you know, what if it's inspections who goes through a building and comes up with what percentage of this building is salvageable in its current state? Fifty percent, seventy percent, ninety percent, none, maybe it's, the inspections goes through and says, um, it's nice that it looks old on the outside and we wanna preserve it, but it's non-preserveable, and that, you, you know, because they're the ones who should be making that determination technically anyway, to the point of somebody buying a building, investing in the company, you know, in the town and saying, well, now I have to worry about, I was gonna demolish it, but I can't demolish it because it's, it's seventy-five percent good, and they're telling me I've gotta fix it, not demolish it. Okay, that would, that would probably go to what's his name's, the doctor's, someplace, um, just saying, so.
Just, um, it's on page five, it's number three, in the event that the building inspector or third-party engineer determines that he or she is not able to determine, but the building inspector before that should be able to determine the structurally sound percentage of it.
Okay, but that should be a, I'm not saying that he should be able to do, but it should be a, um, it should be a, a reason to not, you know, for, they should be able to override, being that they're the enforcement, and if you read some of the determinations by this lawyer, you know, they are the enforcement, and not only does the town not have the right to tell them basically what to do, you know, they are the ones who make determinations based on their, uh, the laws of the Massachusetts and, and the codes and all that stuff, so technically, they'd be the ones going into a building and saying, well, so at what percentage, so go back to the question, at what percentage then would it kick in that you would have the right to say, that this bylaw would kick in? It's fifty, it's only fifty percent bad, the bylaw kicks in that they, you know, that you gotta try to make a good faith effort to fix it or do something with it before you demolish it, and then, or if you can't come up with the money and you can't, so therefore you can't, you know, you can't tell somebody to do something if they don't have the money to do it. I mean, de- demolition is demolition, I mean, that, that makes something more viable sometimes to build a new building, to make money off of. But if you can't fix what's existing there, 'cause it's out of your price range, it just is, and I don't think the town, the commission, anybody should have the right to to hold somebody hostage forever, especially not after it's demolished, you know, can't be sold, can't get a building permit, can't do whatever, I think that also is, is, and according to the lawyer, he had some issues with some of the things that are still written in here about not being able to get a building permit for three years. Um, should they, should the building be, well, should it be sold, or sold after demolition? So, or, there's, you have a couple of points in there about demolition and selling the building and not, or nobody being able to get a building permit if the building's demolished.
Do we build one from Mass Historical Society?
I don't know, there's just some, there are some things, I don't, I haven't studied enough now, again, to, to be up to speed, you know, we get our, we get our notification on a, you know, Monday that we have a meeting on a Wednesday or something like that, and we don't have everything we need for it, so it's just, it's, I, I know, we did it nineteen, it's now twenty-five, it's been a long time, okay? And COVID happened in between, so my brain is, you know.
I just sent it on the seventh, I was asked to send a, a copy of the D L I bylaw, attached it. So, when I forwarded the email, I did my part.
You did your part, right, we just generally don't get our stuff till like two days before, I'm just saying, if we get it, so, no, we get it.
I have a concern, my son owned a house that is, was built in, I think, eighteen thirty-two, one of the oldest houses in South, which on Jersey Street. My concern is if he had a, a substantial amount of fire, damaged twenty-five, thirty percent, that the building inspector comes over and inspects it on the bylaw, 'cause he wants to knock it down for the new house up, and the inspector says, well, it's only thirty-five percent damaged. This bylaw prevents him from doing anything for eighteen months. So, so what happens in the eighteen months? You know, he's, the project goes on hold, the building becomes from thirty-five percent damage to fifty percent damage because of being left in the open and unbeareable. I, I just, again, I think it's.
There's something in here.
It's going to tie the hands of the peo- the people that. You know, it, it'll come in and.
Section, I can refer, page four, section twelve dash one oh five, emergency demolition. If an inspection of, if, 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 I'm sorry, if after inspections, he, that, that should be not work, the building inspector finds the building substantially subjected to the bylaw is found to pose immediate threat to the public health or safety due to demolition, it's basically giving you permission.
What I said, I said.
You're talking about the fire.
I said, if the building inspector comes in and says thirty-five percent of the building is damaged and the rest of it is salvageable, and my son wants to knock that building down at thirty-five percent, that's his option, this bylaw prevents him from doing that, because the building inspector said seventy-five percent of it is good.
Not according to this part of the demolition delay by.
My interpretation of it is different.
Well, this is emergency demolition.
Well, it would be class, it could classify as an emergency if it's a fire and it poses a hazard to.
And then it says he's gotta write a report and you got thirty days to get it, so.
Uh, we can change things, we can alter things, it's just, this is the whole point of.
Part of the thirty days too was, um, when the building on Main Street had the fire, we were never notified of it, and yes, it had to come down because it was structurally unsafe, but we were never notified, and it was just kind of, uh, even though we're part of the governmental body.
To that, to that point, they tried to get the other one to be torn down, and that is the oldest building on Main Street. It still exists and it's been refurbished, so luckily, that, when, when I got a call, I said, don't you dare, and they can't make you, it's not a hazard, you can't. So I did actually get some advice from afar on that one.
Thank you.
That was the gate penalty. Boy, this is tough.
Mr. Boxton?
Uh, one final point, uh, it was my understanding that, um, yes, the historic commission worked on this bylaw, but then it was to come to s- uh, the subcommittee, uh, and as far as I understood, subcommittee has the ability to alter it within their, their view. Um, it, if, if the subcommittee deems it necessary to stay on the table and do more work on it before it goes to council? Please, uh, don't crumple it up and have us start all over, let us work together, and if changes are gonna be made, I assume the subcommittee was capable of implementing those changes before it goes to council.
So we've been sending it back to us and we can give your suggestions.
We asked for clarification, just for the record, we asked for clarification on what the lawyer was talking about on this, and Peggy sent an email out, and there was no response even for Peggy. We had asked, 'cause we didn't quite understand what this was, and we just.
I referred it back to the attorney, so let's just make it clear.
I'm just saying, we never heard anything.
So you should have communicated back to me saying, hey, could you give us an example? Okay, I know you have things going on, and with all due respect, because I've heard that Peggy has been giving them all the support. all the support that's not part of her office, all right? So we've been given support from the town hall. I just wanna make it clear, because people watch this, okay? If you're not getting certain information, you have to circle back and say, hey, could you look at this again? What is it, we have a million projects going on and we would gladly help. And one comment was the inspections wasn't helping, then it was Mike Julian was on a Zoom call and participated in the call. Well, you can't have it both ways, they didn't help you, but he's on a Zoom call. So if we all wanna work together, we will, but we have a million projects going. Just say, what I said back was, tell us specifically, and Counsel Kelly, you're an attorney, what specifically is it that you have questions on and put it in writing? Because attorneys cost a lot of money and we're not just gonna have attorneys just go round and round. Put specifically what your concerns are so that we can get that information and we will gladly do that. But I'm not sending stuff to an attorney at four hundred dollars an hour just to look at something to give feedback on what they don't know targeted that the questions are gonna be. So if there's specific issues that they want targeted, tell me what they are and we'll put that to the attorney. But I'm not gonna waste town's money to just take a look at it for free, for advice like that, it costs a lot of money. I'm glad we work with the commission, but they have to have specific targeted things that they wanna address.
Can I address that, please? Jack, I, we, we do thank you for your help and it's not what I'm saying, is we have, and we've asked, Peggy sent an email with, with those questions to inspections, just asking them, what are your concerns? Just put those questions in an email, even if they couldn't, and it's just.
All right, so let's, I mean, that is something that I think the town manager and commission can talk about. But as far, are there any, any more comments about the bylaw?
I got one, of course, just a, a statement on process and procedure. Town council makes bylaws, not boards and commissions. The recommendation comes out of the Historical Society, well, even planning board. They, they, they recommend, we bring it to subcommittee, we hammer it, knock the ten, and after we come up with the final answer. If the final answer is go left, go right, add to it, subtract from it, council subcommittee recommends that and then sends it upstairs. Usually, in a finished product, would you ever send anything to an attorney? You know, I mean, if you had to send it for every question you had while you're going, that'd get really expensive. So I think moving forward that this subcommittee is the one that's gonna alter that. You can propose it, put it on the table, I would recommend tabling it to the next meeting. It needs further work, but you need to do it as a council, um, subcommittee.
We were asked to write the bylaw.
That's fine.
That's, and we've never written a bylaw, so this has just been many years of progress.
Once you're done writing it, bring it forward, put it on the table.
That's what it is and we don't, not getting answers and sending emails and constantly sending emails and not getting replies. It's frustrating.
All right, so is, are there any more comments about the bylaw tonight?
Procedure is where we're going forward. So, since nineteen, we referred it, I'm just being clear, because I was on the pity. We said, take it back, do some work with it, work with somebody. If you were having any issues, you could have come back anytime. I agree with, with the chairman, that's why I said, you know, we haven't, you haven't seen it, we need to look at it, we need to, now we need to look at it again. And I would highly recommend that we all have this paper too. And that we and those missing at least have the opportunity to, to do that. Come on back, keep going at it, you can't just stop, you gotta keep going at it. And I do, I would suggest that our committee put it on an agenda as a working, a working item and we make sure that it gets out there to, you know, that this, the next, whatever meeting we decide to do this at is posted far enough in advance so the general public can say, oh, they're reviewing, you know, we like your input, come on out to this meeting and give us, because this is more, this is almost a hearing scenario. This is the kind of thing where people out there, other people, the people that are represented, you know, the, the townspeople might have something to say, they might say, you know, I don't see the, the need for it, or, no, I think I have some ideas, or women, you're telling me you're gonna do this to me? And that's, we need other public input besides, you know, a few people around the table. But I think you're trying, your effort is good, but it's been since nineteen that this committee has seen it. That's way too long, and if you're having all those issues, we're glad to help you. And to the point, I did say, go to the top i- if there's a question and when, and if you don't get answers, you don't get answers. But it, you know, that's who we always, you know, I, sorry, I support the town managers, come, like, come to us, just go to the top. It's not that you're, that you're mad at the bottom, you're just going for the next level, that's all.
And I'm not saying this is not on the town manager now because he's been incredible. Previous town managers we have on too, so we have done that, we've done that process.
So let's, let's start, let, not fresh, because you've got a lot going for you. Just let this, let this group have.